Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the monthly regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Albany Planning Board. Today is Tuesday, July 8th. It is now 6:03 PM. We call the meeting to order. Been joined by my colleagues on the board, Martin Shadi and Rachel. We are also joined by several members of the planning staff, including Dr. Breckley and Council. We have four items on the agenda, one for the hearing and three for the meeting. The rules of procedure are located on the website. If you have any questions about that, please feel free to ask for public comment and presentation. Presentation, each presenter is allowed 10 minutes for presentation. Elected officials are allowed six minutes for public comment, having represented representing a larger swath of the community, and each member of the public is allowed three minutes. Are you good? All right. First, on our hearing agenda, we have a conditional use permit for 84 Madison Avenue, Wesley Babcock. The applicant, this is a conversion of an existing 1,504 square foot structure at a property from a two-unit into a three-unit townhouse. Right here.
My name is Evan. I work with Wesley.
Ever since?
Oh, sorry. First time in the meeting. So it's 84 Madison, connecting Green Street, and it leads all the way up towards the grand street and everything near the community centers. You can see we have residing also rental properties next to it by other owners. We would like to improve it and then grow it from where it's at as a two-unit to a three. It has all the egress needed for all units. The rear has decking, if you look at site plans, the next one. The deck leads all the way up to the third level, has stairways all the way through. The front has, of course, inside staircase. It kind of swings around internally and leads upwards. The front is a really wide, old classic door. I think it's been with the building since, I think, in the early 1800s. We look to maintain that door. We want to keep the look and integrity of the front and keep the greenery grown. I think we want to landscaping-wise, keep the green nice and vibrant. As you can see, we have trash in the back there. There's a parking lot that's also shared with, I think there's Albany Housing Associations on the other half of the parking lot in the back. Towards the main parking lot inside, we have a shared dumpster area. We have dumpster, I think, pick up every Sunday and Monday, depending on recycling. It's with county waste. The Albany Housing Association has their other dump. I think it gets removed on Mondays and Tuesdays. Might be a day off depending on, it really depends on weather and their schedule. And yeah, we are open to any questions anyone has.
Any questions from the board?
Is trash picked up in the back of the house?
Yes. We have a bin that's inside the fence area.
And then goes to the back?
Yep. It is, it is, it's a, I think it's shared with like the Albany Housing Association and like another.
Staff comments?
So to go over the project, it is listed as type two actions and no seeker. No further seeker actions required. The application was referred to the Albany County Planning Board as prior on June 6th. The two-story building where the additional unit is being proposed was constructed in 1815. It is listed on the National Register of Historic Places as part of the past year's historic district. The building has been used as a townhouse dwelling containing two dwelling units. It has frontage along Madison Avenue and if you want to call it the rear, but the second frontage is Weaver Street. The records indicate that it has been used as a residential townhouse containing two dwelling units until it was acquired by the applicant in December of 2024. This requires a conditional use permit because of the addition, proposed addition of the other third unit. The current use of the dwelling, or the current use is classified as a townhouse where the maximum number of units is three. The project, as it is being proposed, is located in the attic space which measures up to 598 square feet. The floor plans that were submitted currently do not identify internal, external doors, internal, external doors, walls, windows, dimensions. An analysis of the block of Madison Avenue, Green Street, and Hovner Street, lot including the subject property, found approximately nine buildings that contain single units, 11 that contain two units, two buildings that contain three units, and one multi-unit structure that contains five buildings connected, and a couple vacant parcels. The three-unit buildings contain a larger square foot living area and a full third story. The submission currently does not identify the storage and disposal of refuse and recycling. It is included in this presentation. The applicant has to provide that information to us. The storage should be outside of the leave of the right of way, which applies to both frontages Madison and Weaver Street because it is a property with two frontages. It is, the property was utilized as a two-unit owner occupied at least, until at least since December 13, 2001. The applicant then has completed some work to convert the attic space into a third unit. Unfortunately, maybe lack of information on the applicant's part without the required listing permits, and therefore they're fore-sighted and a stop look order was issued. Additional deck ingress egress has been installed without the application submission review. Because this is a lay-in start resources over a district, exterior computer of appropriateness would have been required for any external work that was completed, and therefore they're being sort of listed as to what would be appropriate for the, for the location. The applicant has to provide information, like, that the change in sort of the trash containers. Per the USDA, no townhouse dwelling in the RT district may be converted to increase the total number of dwelling units within the building without meeting the approval of the conditional use permit unless applicable standards have been met, and these include the following. The lot area minimum that's required in the RT district is 1150 square feet. The lot in question needs that, with 2,450 square foot. The conversion cannot result in a total number of dwelling units that exceeds maximum number allowed in the applicable dwelling zoning district, RT district, and townhouse allows for three units, which is what is being proposed. The external alterations to the building proposed in accommodation to the conversion should comply with the standards located in the building in the streetscape design section. The application stated that no exterior alteration was being proposed, but the work's been completed or all was completed, but were not clear as to how much it complies with the existing code. These are some of the images of the work in the rear that was completed, that polite egress from the attic. We need some additional details from the applicant regarding ingress egress to determine if the structure meets the building code. The proposed third unit is the attic space, which does not appear to be a full story. One of the requirements of the conversion is it has to occupy a full story. The proposed unit has to occupy the full story. A minimum of 80% of the building story, the average ceiling height, has not been provided, and therefore the habitability as a part of the building code, per building code, cannot be confirmed. So at this point, we would ask the applicant to substantiate that the existing attic space qualifies as a story and is habitable, meaning addresses, ingress, egress, ceiling height, light ventilation, fire suppression, per the standard of the existing code, as well as the United States building code, and engineering report would be required. And make note that a sprinkler system would be required in the new unit for the proposed conversion and all areas of public egress.
Any further questions from the board upon hearing the staff report? Thank you for coming in. We're looking at a motion to table the CUP until subsequent meetings or motion. There's a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to table the conditional use permit until subsequent meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's proposed. There you go. Thank you. We have Kip Temple Region at 596 Manning Boulevard with a development plan review and two waiver requests for off-street parking. This is expansion of a surface parking lot containing 35 new off-street parking spaces with 10 bank spaces and 10 designated for Tivoli Preserve, as well as circulation improvements located at the existing Kip Middle School along the connection from parking lot to the existing trail at the Tivoli Preserve.
Yes, so hi, I am Ashley and I am from the representing agent, NJ. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So this is the project location and it is zoned M U N E. We have an image on the left-hand side and on the right-hand side we show the zoning. Thank you. So this is the existing conditions plan and it shows the parcel in question where we would like to propose the parking lot. Here we have the proposed site plan. On the left-hand side, we show the parking, the yellow square, which is kind of hard to see, but there is the location of the Tivoli ten spaces, as well as, I believe this is the older presentation from the last meeting?
Yeah, that is.
It was sent to the city last week. This is, I believe, what was sent. It was the last.
We have the turning movement that you sent previously.
So there is an updated site plan that is included.
It was sent the second.
It might have updated the other slides.
This is very close to what the updated site plan is. We can just identify what the different changes are so that everybody is aware if that's, if that's easier. So for example, why did I just go through?
No, no.
Okay, Alana Moran with Lansing Engineering. We helped with the, the project here as far as transportation and circulation and many of the coordinating meetings that we've had with the city and the planning department. This certainly isn't new to the board, so you've seen all this before. But there have been updates to the plan itself, specifically adjacent to the corner of the existing middle school building and between the middle school building and the, the new circulation area is a striped parking, a striped crosswalk, so that students, as they're getting dropped off, which on the bottom right, you can see the blue loop, that's the parent drop-off. One of the benefits of this particular plan is that it's going to separate bus traffic and parent drop-off traffic and keep that away from Manning Boulevard there, so that it's going to be really a safety benefit and a circulation benefit for the school and for the general commuting public in the area. So there's a crosswalk that's going from the student drop-off area direct across into the middle school, and there's also a gated access. It's the farthest to the left. Phil Trudeau at engineering requested that that would be gated so that there wouldn't, wouldn't be parents going from the, their circulating parking lot into where the buses would be, which is the red loop. So that's a change that's not noted. I'm trying to see what else there is. The circulation pattern to the right, where the Tivoli Preserve area is, is a little bit different. It's been updated to match what the city specifically is looking for. Circulation pattern basically showing what buses can do coming in and out of those sites. They have an extra space as needed, but the buses are primarily, primarily going to circulate as to the previous plan. But this does show the crosswalk that we were talking about before. It doesn't show the updated Tivoli Park plan. It's very similar to what's there, but is not fully, fully complete, so. But it is updated to what the, the city has planned for construction. We can probably go back to the other presentation and just continue through.
That one was going to be showing?
Yes.
That's the drop-off of that.
That was showing the drop-off in the middle school, the expanded parking area.
So it starts out the same with the buses?
No, so, so that did show just that a bus will be able to maneuver, maneuver if they had to, but it, it is still separate for this plan.
Okay. So you can probably go to the next screen.
So this goes into the additional information for the memorandum of understanding that has been in place with the City of Albany since 2021, and it aims to meet these two goals. We do believe we are achieving these two goals through this plan to increase traffic safety for the students and to increase access to Tivoli Preserve. This plan has been coordinated with the planning department and it is anticipated to take approximately three months to complete. Section of ordinance in question. So we are requesting that we increase parking that is allowed in this parcel. If you go to the next slide. So the ordinance in question basically states the minimum and maximum parking requirements for the land use category. For this instance, we are requesting, and I apologize if it's too small, but we are requesting an increase, and let me go to my sheet. So we are requesting 89, including two ADA stalls, and we have space allotted for 10 additional bank spaces for future installation. The stalls on this presentation are incorrect, so we are doing 84 or 89 as stated, so it's less than what was virtually proposed. And the slide goes into the waiver criteria for requesting the increase in parking. And this is the character of the neighborhood. We concur that we are matching the character of the neighborhood. We are matching the, the school character, the apartments adjacent, and we believe that the addition of the parking will coincide with the addition of the Tivoli Preserve Trailhead that is proposed by the city. We have considered alternatives in designing this plan, and such alternatives include space constraints, increased demand for the preserve once the parking is provided. There are also safety concerns that were addressed primarily for students and pedestrians that will be in this area when the parking lot is in use. Event needs for the school, if an event is a sporting event or an event's adjacent, then the parking can be provided for that. The gate that is provided has the ability to open for such events. And sustainability, we have explored many options for sustainability, whether it be alternative surfaces or plantings and buffers, landscaping. We did increase landscaping on the current plan. We've added four islands, we've added street trees, we've added plantings within the islands, and the stormwater practices have been revised according to our geotechnical report.
What changes?
So the stormwater management practice has gone from an infiltration practice to a filtration practice so that we are not impacting the slopes adjacent and the water will be contained, treated, and then slowly outletted to the adjacent properties. So existing issues, traffic issues, that we aim to alleviate from this project would again be the congestion that's created by the, the morning and the evening layout of the school, as well as parents and buses. So with the additional parking and the additional circulation, we believe that most of the congestion and bottlenecking at the entrance of the parking lot for the middle school With the parking lot provided, parking spaces provided for Tivoli, we believe that we've integrated this area with the community. There are community spaces, there are, there are landscaping, there are benches provided along the path to the preserve adjacent to the school for the community. And if there are any comments or questions.
If it would be okay, I'm with White Menosferman and Anna. My name's Teresa Baker, and I just wanted to try to answer some of the questions in advance if we could, if that's all right, relative to the tree clearing on the site. Is that okay, or do you want to wait until after?
Yes, if you can speak to the tree clearing, that would be great.
Okay, excellent. So I have with me Bill Sweet. And what, what occurred is on the property that the middle school currently owns, where there is an existing stormwater facility, they were investigating the existing stormwater facility in order to answer questions that the water department had about stormwater control, not only on the new property that they don't acquire, don't own yet, but on the old property. So on that portion of the property, the property that they own, the middle school, they, they cleared trees in the stormwater basin and to get the equipment down to the existing stormwater basin, and they had to remove the woody vegetation from the basin. You have to maintain stormwater basins, you're supposed to maintain them more frequently than this one was, and so there was a lot of woody vegetation in it. That was cleared. That's not part of the park, that is property that's always been owned by the middle school. The parking, the, the property on which the parking lot and other improvements are slated to go is property that is currently owned by the state of New York, which has been, which there's the MOU between the city and the Kip School, and there is also legislation that was adopted in 2022 that authorized the state to sell, to transfer the land to the school to be used for the very specific purpose of improving circulation and parking, and also, most importantly, for the production of the additional parking for the Tivoli, Tivoli Park Trailhead. And all of those goals are being met by this plan. This property was never part of the park, it was, it had a house on it, and that house was demolished a number of years ago when the state acquired the property. So it was, it was acquired for the purpose of providing, you know, providing the trailhead parking and exactly what we're providing here today. So if I've missed anything, let me know, but that's, that's the reason for the activity at the site.
What's the point where the transfer from New York State occurs? Has that been worked out?
The deed has already been drafted from OGS to the school, and so we're just, we're just waiting to get the approval from the city for the plan. They wanted to see that.
Board members, are there any questions?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, we'll let you know who needs to come back.
Okay, thank you.
We have a full hour of this project in particular, so let's begin the public comment. We have a full house in this particular, so let's begin the public comment. All right, thank you. John O'Grady. Would it be okay if we switch places with our tech guy? That's Kim Short.
Hello. Hi, my name is Kim Tadio, and I'm, oh, sorry. Yep, that's okay. That's all right. Let's go. Hi, how's everyone doing today? All right. Let me know when I, can someone wave my hand if I, when I'm at my free mirror? Okay, hi, my name is Kim Tadio. I am the executive director and farm manager for Friends of Tivoli Lake Preserve and Farm. We have a license agreement with the city of Albany to do wonderful work in the preserve. Thank you. I want to start with an apology. As the director, I feel a bit of my own ownership and responsibility for any trees and things that have happened because of lack of understanding from the meeting from February, from February fourth, that I could have potentially brought in more public comment. I want to do a land acknowledgement of the native stewards, the Honegoshonies, the Mohekans, and Brother Yusef. I was actually super excited in 2021 when we actually had a meeting on that piece of land with New York State Parks, who had told us that New York State Parks had this land, and they were super excited about potentially giving it to the city, having it be part of the actual preserve, folding it in. In 2022, we were told that KIP had worked with a lobbying firm to actually acquire the land, and so therefore, that idea for the public comment went away. But here we are in 2025 with public comments. And according to the New York State tax map, I see that the land is still owned by New York State Parks, which means, planning department, you actually have some power here. And this is what I want to talk to you about, power and community. I feel like there was a lack of transparency and creative opportunity and creative decision making for this property. The very fact that the very first idea for coming up with a way to do all of this traffic, when there's all of these other planning, there are several other ideas that we could have done. The first, the idea that, the idea of taking a preserve and using that as a parking lot is the first thing, shows an utter lack of creativity and potential. So I want to show you that in four days, we were able to get eighty-eight comments just by putting this to the attention to the public. When I found out about this meeting, I did my hardest to get as much attention to this, to this issue as I could. And I thought we only had sixty-six comments in two days. We have eighty-eight. How exciting. So what would the public say about the land actually being intended for the public and instead being used for a private parking lot with, short, ten spaces for the Tivoli Lake Preserve, while there's a parking lot at the Judson area that always remains empty? I would like to empower the planning department to make a difference. As a planning department, you had visions for the world. Was your vision to actually create more parking spaces? Or is your vision being planning people to create a space? My call to action for you is to either give the land back to the city. You can't. Again, it's currently owned by New York State Parks. The land transfer has not happened yet. Two, you could delay your decision in making anything happen today and give yourselves more time. Three, if you can't do anything, no more trees should be cut, for the love of God. Climate change is happening every day. Do you think that having an asphalt parking lot is going to be helpful with these intense rains that we have? There are people here, again, we got this together in four days. If you really wanted to give yourselves more time, see how many other people would have comments to say. I encourage you to be brave and to be bold and to make unexpected moves. Be in the discomfort, you could really make a difference.
Oh, I was switching, I know the floor. Catherine? Daniel Kelly?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Daniel Kelly. And just to show that I do have some skin in this game, I've been an Albany resident most of my life. I'm also a homeowner, and so by extension, I'm a taxpayer, so, you know. And on top of that, I'm also directly involved with the Friends of Tivoli Lake Preserve and Farm project. Actually involved with the farm part of it as both a volunteer, and I'm also in charge of one of the educational programs there. Now, I know there's been a mass of trees that have already been removed in the area around where this parking lot is planned. I've been told there's been an assertion made that those were trees removed for the expanded trails into the Tivoli Preserve, which I don't really buy. It sounds to me like it was in the area where the parking lot is planned and certainly adjacent to it. You know, I'm, I have no problem with the KIP school. I support their goals. But I do think that this section of the parking expansion is an encroachment onto the Tivoli Preserve. That worries me because we can make, over time, we can make a lot of little encroachments until we find we no longer have a preserve there anymore. Now, if a parking lot is inevitable, I mean, why not make it a parking lot with tree islands rather than just a blank sort of asphalt space? Something that would not only provide shade for people, a refuge for birds, and as well as help to contain some of the stormwater runoff. Do you think that's something that should be considered, especially in a city like Albany, where we get a lot of rain? Now, I really think that the Tivoli Preserve is not only a wildlife sanctuary that has to be protected as much as possible, and even if that means rejecting an expanding parking, expanded parking lot. It's also an educational resource, just as much as the KIP school is. And it's just a wonderful green space for Albany's residents. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Before we go to the next speaker, Kim, were you able to tell me how large in terms of maybe acreage the preserve is?
Eighty acres is what we've. I'm John O'Grady. I'm the president of the board of Friends of Tivoli Lake Preserve and Farm. Had to, I improvise here on some things. We got a lot of letters. I was expecting like five or six people to write letters of support. And we got a lot, and I think it speaks to how much people care about what's going on in the preserves and, and how much, I guess, influence I would say we have on, on the people who care about the preserve. I almost think we're kind of a proxy for a few hundred people out there who want to see this preserved as well as possible. One of our commenters described the study in the Washington Post that researched tree siting plans of several dozen cities. One of them was Albany, Albany city in Detroit area. Included maps about tree coverage, which cities gained, which cities lost. And in the Albany map, it says that we lost. It wasn't a great big percentage, but we lost a percentage of trees in the last few years. The greatest loss, the biggest percentage of loss occurred in two places, the south end neighborhoods and the neighborhoods immediately surrounding the preserves. I say this just, not that I think the city has been regretful. I, I just think that we need, it's more urgent that we need to find other ways. The city has been, there have been plans, studies, commissions set up by the city, like the Albany 2030 Comprehensive Plan. More recently, the 2025, 2025 trees for 2025. I think this kind of flies in the face of that. Okay. I mean, the main point, and I think Kim touched on this also, is that we do a lot of collaboration at the Friends group. We try to, you know, listen to people, see what they want. We collaborate with the city a lot. And we thought we'd be collaborating with KIP on this at the meeting that Kim mentioned, which took place on site and was green at the time. We, my recollection of the meeting was that the state parks, at, at some, even at, even at some cost, would want that area to stay green. I wish there were a way for the planning board to have a closer relationship with the public, kind of like more of a back and forth. There's invitation to comment, and the materials are public. There is very little opportunity to ask specific questions about what's in the materials. And I think that would be more helpful to avoid issues like this. As Dan said, we like it. We, we with what they do, we think the plans are terrific, you know, for what they wanted. But I think there are alternatives, and we have experts who wrote some things about alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Utah Anderson?
Hello, I'm Utah Anderson. I live in Center Square in Albany. And I want to preserve the nature, preserve badly, very badly. Too many natural spaces, trees, and that nature areas are being destroyed and encroached little by little by little, more and more and more. And it pains me. It really does. Parking spaces, okay. Has anyone done any carpooling, or is that too inconvenient? Extra parking spaces, that would be a convenience, definitely. But nature preserves are finite spaces, and they are disappearing constantly. And in this day and age, you probably don't believe in climate change. Well, you don't have to believe it. It is a fact, and we just need way more trees, a few trees here, a few trees there. You know, the dump encroached on the pine bush and parking spaces want to encroach on the Tivoli Nature Preserve. That is unacceptable.
I'll be very brief, there are a lot of speakers. Let me stand up, I've been sitting down, legs get stiff. My name's Charles Houghton. I live on Lancaster Street. My connection with the preserve is I'm a regular financial contributor. I really believe in what Kim and the staff are doing. First, let me say that I've served on a lot of boards in the city. The Albany Water Board, the Assessment Review Board. What you all are doing is terrific. Thank you very much for your service. You also are lucky, you have the best staff guy in the city. And that guy, Mr. Glass, he's terrific, so thank you. Now, maybe my problem can be solved quickly. Other people addressed things that I was concerned about. But in the presentation earlier, it said, connect to a path or a trail. Well, if you've been to the site where Manning Dead Ends, there are two trails. One goes to the north, and it looks like from the drawings, there's no rendering, so I'm not sure I'm right. But it looks like from the drawings that there's an entrance to the trail to the north, but there's no entrance to the trail to the south. I happen to know the people on the water board, and they spent two and a half million dollars daylighting Pontoon Creek. And it would be a shame if you went to the entrance and you couldn't walk down to Pontoon Creek. Now, maybe I'm wrong, and maybe the lady there could correct me, but it does look like there's just one path out. And if you, I went to the site Sunday, there are clearly two paths that go that way, one to the north, one to the south. So my request is, could you fix that? It's important. And the, if you haven't seen the daylighting of Pontoon Creek, please go. It's, it's one of the bright spots in the, you've been there. It's one of the bright spots in the city. Thank you for letting me talk.
Everybody.
Or could she take Happerin's spot since she is here?
Sure. But please state your, your name and address for the market.
Hi.
She's taking Catherine's spot.
Hi, my name is Marie Heffernan, and I'm located in Troy, and I'm a supporter of Tivoli Lake Preserve. I found out about the preserve in 2021 when I began volunteering on the Flex Zoning Program. And for the past two years, I have been working part-time in the community garden, hosting an open garden night. I'm speaking to oppose the recent KIP proposal to extend the parking lot beyond the current zoning. Many trees have already been cut down. I oppose cutting down more trees for the proposed lot. While I support education, educational events and community events, I don't think disrupting ecosystems to create more space for cars is the answer. There are other ways of making sure people can attend events. For example, expanding public transportation options and carpooling. We are living in a world where there are new climate disasters every day. Every decision being made, even on a local level, should consider our shared planet and local ecosystems. The more we preserve, the better. And striving toward creating cities that are not so reliant on cars and have more walkable spaces and more green spaces for citizens should be our shared goal. Additionally, I support any plans to remedy the harm caused in the areas where trees have already been felled for this project, such as planting more mature plantings and planting native pollinator plants. Thank you for your consideration.
Cheryl.
Hi, I'm Cheryl DeCroska. I am a homeowner on Thornton Street. I live directly across from the location that is in question. And I just want to make one correction, please. Besides the house, there was a mother tree that was on that lot, the mother tree of the preserve. I'm a taxpaying resident in the city of Albany. In all honesty, I was very distressed when I first learned that the city had turned the preserve over, or part of the preserve land over to KIP for parking lots, writing to register my disagreement and the decisions made regarding the land and the trees upon it. I hope to prevent further destruction of additional trees and land, to urge the city and KIP to plant mature trees and to tend and water them. The new plantings that are on the street don't have water bags. Is someone going to go out every week and feed those trees five gallons of water each so that they are insured to survive until next year? And to protect wildlife and to protect human life. We must stop cutting down trees. No trees, no humans. We share the DNA with the trees. We can only breed because of them. Trees are suffering and in decline. There were fourteen live trees, live and mature and healthy trees in my yard when I purchased my home twenty years ago. All fourteen trees now have a needle cast disease. One of them is entirely dead. One of them fell on my house last year. Also, the destruction and removal of trees in the preserve is leading to wildlife distress. Deer are now coming out of the preserve in broad daylight, not just in the middle of the night anymore. I've had as many as six jump the fence into my yard at a time. And then I watched them jump back over the fence and go further into the city in search of food and probably in fear of the activities that have occurred there. I urge you all to take a ride anyplace through the city of Albany. Take a look at the trees and the condition of the trees. Take a ride in the surrounding counties. Trees are in decline, and we need to stop. On one hand, we have the Radix Center working hard. On one hand, we have the Radix Center working hard to try and help, you know, plant trees in the poorer neighborhoods, I think in the south end and in this area. I qualified for some in my front yard. But again, I just, yeah. I support everything that everyone else here has said in regard to the comments about this. Thank you for your time and for your work.
Can I make a comment just on the mother tree? So I looked on Google Earth and the reason I know this.
Wait, you mean to say yes?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm really sorry, I apologize. In terms of the mother tree that was cut down, if you actually look on Google Earth and where you could see the actual slot for where there was the house, there were trees that were back there. And that is the 596 Manning Boulevard property. Those trees were cut down. That is not part of the trees that are part of the Tivoli Lake Preserve or enhancements project. That is a different thing. Look with your eye roll. And you can see on Google Earth that those trees were cut down because they were healthy, alive mother tree.
Staff comments? Well, before we do staff, are there any follow-up questions from board? Simone, yes ma'am?
No, I registered to make a comment and I have the email confirmation, but my name's not up there.
Miss, what's your name?
Cordelia Ellery.
So it might be that you, did you submit a written comment as well?
Yes, I did myself and my mothers at the same exact time, in the same exact way. So her name's up there, but mine.
Right, so it might be that your, the way you're came through with the written comment, it was essentially a submission of a written comment and not a registration to speak. So we have the, what's this? We have all the comments added to the record.
Do you want to speak?
I do, that's why I registered.
Please, please, um, and speak for three minutes.
Hi, good evening. So again, my name is Cordelia June Ellery and I'm a new resident to Albany. I've been here for two years. I moved up here from the Bronx, the South Bronx, where I was part of Community Board 11 in the South Bronx. So I moved up here, I'm an urban farmer educator and a yoga instructor. And I do lease a private lot and have a garden right here on Clinton, right around, I could throw a stone there, right here on Clinton and Henry Johnson. And I do oppose the parking lot. I got in, I heard about this through the Friends of Tivoli, their email list. And when I saw that it was KIP, and I apologize, it's nothing personal, KIP. The reason I moved to Albany is because a KIP school, well, one of the reasons, took over a building next door and they just came in and took over, they took over our parking garage and our residential playground for their recess. And so to see that it's just having like a monopoly on every, every aspect of my life, it seems. So I am here for personal reasons and for environmental reasons. So yeah, I just wanted to oppose it and just remind everyone that the word preservation means to preserve. And so the fact that anyone can even try to encroach on a preservation is mind-boggling to me. Why preserve if you can't actually preserve? So yeah, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to speak?
I would.
Can you sit down, state your name and address, please?
My name is Judy Stacy. I live on Sherman Street and I go down to the preserve almost every day. I've been doing that for 45 years. My sons and I, I am the former gardener for the city of Albany. I'm also, I've worked in every neighborhood to beautify it. I was the gardener out at the airport for the last four or five years. And my real love is public beautification and wild spaces. What I see going on at Tivoli over the years is first it was a dump. But my sons and I would go down there and that's where we got our horticultural education. We studied flowers, we studied trees, we looked up birds. It gave me my career. My one son is a farmer because of this. My other son grows plants for sale. My granddaughter has taken it up. We've all spent hours and days down in Tivoli as an educational experience and as a way to get away from the hustle and the bustle of city life. The idea of not preserving every single inch is a travesty. Preserve means to keep, it means to save. Now we're going to have all of this blacktop, all of this cement. The insects which are suffering a terrible decline. Those that are in the earth are now either dead or chased away or unavailable to the animals that feed on them. Birds, one, one mature oak hosts 450 different insects for birds and wildlife to feed on. One, and look at how many trees have been torn down, crushed, disrespected for parking lots. And it's always, well, we only need this many spaces. Oh, well, we've grown, we need a bit more. It's okay because we already have some, so this will just be an expansion. No, why don't preserves and nature get the respect that they should have? They're providing us with life, with sanity, with a place to go. I am opposed to any expansion of this parking lot.
Do you know others? We will now begin staff comments.
Are you taking more comments?
The preference was for everybody to sign up. Did you submit written comments?
Yes, I did. But it's also based on information they provided, which is inaccurate.
Information is good. What I want to do is to be fair to the interested parties, both the presenter and the opposition. Fair to our staff who has prepared and our planning board who are working to sign up for structure. This is the final comment. Folks have signed up. We've gone through the lists. We've extended courtesies, your comment will be the last and then we will have the staff comments.
My name's Helen Plaisson, 817 Livingston Avenue, volunteering for the Tivoli. My two comments are in response to their presentation. One, it is not true that there's been no change in the neighborhood. If you go down to the end of Manning entrance, it's devastation. You can see the devastation, so it's not true that there's been no change in the neighborhood. Two, frankly, they make it sound they're doing us a favor by letting us use a bus. There's bus parking at Livingston, we've had school groups visit, we've had people visit. We have bus parking, so please don't use us as an excuse for that. And that's just in response to two things I said, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
No, I have a question.
Okay.
When you said there's devastation at the end, what do you mean?
If you, if you go down there, there are, there used to be trees that went all the way up to Manning and it looks like it's been bombed. You see, if you drive down there, you will see this huge area with just branches down. And this is not on our trail. Drive down to the end of Manning. It's, I didn't recognize it at first.
This is recent?
Yeah, I went, well, it was like two weeks ago. And I mean, it really looks like a bomb went. When I came out from the trail at Manning, come along the creek, come up the trail, I really didn't recognize it because there were trees all the way up to the street. And as you're approaching Manning, the end of Manning, we've got the entry road for the water department, this huge area here, all trees down. Again, I didn't recognize it. And this was about two weeks ago that I was there. So yeah, so you cannot say that it doesn't look different because it absolutely doesn't look different.
Isn't that part of the site?
Well, so the city is currently making a substantial investment in the preserve, which includes.
This is not the preserve.
Three entry points to the preserve. One of them being at North Manning Boulevard, one of them being at Wells Street, one of them being at Bedlam Beverly Avenue. So some of the.
No, the trail, as you're coming down Manning, you've got the highway, the water department road here and then you've got the, what used to be what's the entrance and then the trail that comes off here. Further down, they're straightening out where there was a really steep hill, they're doing some switchbacks. This is a different area. This is right at, if you're driving down Manning, right along Manning, here's the road for the highway department. This is a bombed out area of broken down trees. Please look at it, it's, it's, yeah, it's horrifying. It's this huge area, but again, you cannot say the character has not been changed because you can see all the broken down trees and it is not part of Tivoli. Tivoli goes further back to straighten out that steep hill and then as you come in, the trail where the kiosk was, it kind of curves up, but that's not Tivoli.
Are you, are you saying that this, what you're witnessing is either a part of the highlighted parcel in red?
I can't tell that, I can't.
Because, because we, our purview is about very much.
No, it's further down.
But those are cleared out.
That's what cleared it out.
But if you go further down, like. Try point.
That's where it out.
But that's, the red is what we're talking about.
So this, this is the water department road? This whole area has been taken down?
Yeah, that's the city project.
That's the city. That's from why.
So that is the city project and this is the site of the KIP project that we're here to discuss.
This is not part of Tivoli. This is not part of the trail.
On the right of way there, so we're creating a gateway into the preserve.
No, your gateway is here. That's what you have at the.
I mean, I was just down there today, but I was looking specifically at the parcel in question.
Okay, all these trees are not right here. And the gateway is actually here, you can see there's been like tiny blocks there. But I mean, this is all gone.
You walk in and walk out.
What we're talking about is the red square, that's within our purpose. The red square is what we're talking about. Those are gone too.
Okay, so I'm not sure, then, okay, then I guess I would say something to the city about why were those all taken down and now they're being replaced? It's not part of, I know there's, I know there's a plan for Monumental Entrance, but it's, that's further down. If you, if you go.
I'd love to pull up the plan, but I don't.
Yeah, if you go down there, like that's the road, I mean, this has been cleared because that's what Monumental, that's what these blocks are cut free of. This, this is all gone.
If I have the plan ready to pull up, I can show you exactly where the delineation can be. But I don't know that we have that because we were focused on this case.
Thank you very much. So we had the presentation from that, opportunity to question from the board. Comments from the, comments from the public? Are there any additional questions that we have for the presenter? After having heard the comments from the public? Not staff comments?
We have staff comments.
Staff, or please?
Did you have something prepared to give? So this has been a project that we've been working on with a lot of parties here tonight for a number of years. So it's surprising to see as many people as there are here tonight. We did also have a meeting on this in February, it was before the board, and I think we had one of the comment. I understand that the clearing activity at the site has shocked some people and, you know, I don't know that anyone was given advance notice of that. That said, parcels under an acre that are privately owned, in this case, I know the state is involved, but we really don't have jurisdiction over tree cutting or clearing on lots under one acre. So regardless of what the board decides in terms of the construction of a parking lot or anything else on the site, that I can't do anything to prevent trees from being cut down. That said, you know, I understand a lot of the concerns, but it would be disingenuous for me to sit here and go back in time and undercut all the work we've done with KIP, with also the Livingston schools involved. I know we've been working with the Friends on a number of things over the years. I really apologize if you weren't aware of what was proposed for this site. I'll speak with my staff to make sure that's more clearly communicated moving forward. But you know, I think that it's always been a part of the preserve vision to create a gateway at this location, which the city is currently in the process of doing. This site is adjacent to the city-owned right of way that we had just shown on the site there. So the city is making a number of improvements there in consistency with that visioning plan. And that does speak to creating parking at the entry point. So I know that, you know, this number of spaces, I think, over the course of time has increased from the original plan, which I think I saw 22 spaces to 35 spaces. However, the original proposal was also a shared lot that would have shared use of the spaces. In this proposal, there are 10 dedicated spaces for the preserve. And they're also working with the Appin over the course of this project, they've agreed to bank 10 spaces. So that is, they don't get constructed if there's not a need for them, you know, in the future. But you know, the city does benefit by achieving a dedicated parking area for the preserve. And that requires someone else to make a substantial investment, which frees up more money for us to implement other projects related to the preserve. So again, this has been an ongoing project. There is state legislation that speaks to this property being transferred to KIP. There is an MOU between the city and KIP with the shared goal of creating parking for the preserve and improving access to the site. So absent some nuances, you know, this is something that, you know, we've been working on for a long time, so I can't speak against it for sure. I know that changes have been made over the course of this project to incorporate some of the things that suggested tree islands. Our water department is very qualified and hold people to a very high standard with respect to stormwater management, as I'm sure engineers know, because I think the project has been, it's about two months behind schedule due to the review of those documents. And you know, we have a situation here where the city is trying to coordinate construction with KIP for this project and KIP is also building high school. So there's a lot of activity that's occurring right now that, you know, I assume there's a time in this aspect to this, but if that activity was pushed to the next year, we'd have more destruction. So I do believe in climate change, I'm not a big fan of parking. So, um, I do believe in climate change, um, I'm not a big fan of parking, but, uh, at the end of the day, a lot of these projects require compromise, a number of parties at the table, and I think we've been very, working very hard over the years to achieve it as best we can, and, um, I, I certainly take account of what everyone said. I think there are some really good policies we could work together on with respect to the Washington Post article in particular, um, but I think a lot of these things, um, they can't, I can't endorse them at the 11th hour. So in terms of this project, um, you know, I think from the planning department's perspective, we're, we're recommending, I think, approval with some conditions. I would, I would hold to that. Um, but it's really, you know, there's, there's opportunities to make adjustments or improvements. I would encourage the board to ask, uh, questions to the applicant, um, and see if any of the concerns raised tonight can be addressed in the segment.
I'm assuming that's the same with the project. The North Manning.
Yeah, I think, um, you could-
This is different than our corporate.
Correct. This is currently the-
Correct, but just to show the adjacency of some of the improvements the city is currently making at the entry point to the preserve, um, also you'll see a, uh, in terms of thinking forward, the Purcell Creek Greenway Trail, which is a trail that would go from, uh, a mixed-use bicycle pedestrian trail that would go from SUNY Albany, uh, to the riverfront, uh, Corning Preserve. Uh, despite the fact that that's, you know, a multi-phase project, over a number of years, we've incorporated the, the segment of the project that would come through this area, um, as well as we have a place space and, um, some additional recreational facilities and activities. We did, uh, make a substantial effort to preserve a tree that was dedicated, um, in memory of Brother Yusef. Um, I don't know if it shows on there, but it is adjacent to, uh, the gray at the bottom, which is, um, a proposal that, um, has not been presented yet, but, uh, is a proposal for the Livingston apartments to expand their facility there to create, I believe, 100 more units for seniors to reside at this location. So, um, there has been a lot of thought put into this. Um, you know, I, it doesn't always work out exactly the way that everyone wants it to, but, uh, you know, we weren't surprised by the clearing activity, and I think that should have waited until the project was endorsed, but, um, all that said, um, I think, um, you know, I think I said what I had to say, but I think, you know, it's, uh, that's the one that's desperate view. As far as the project itself, um, in terms of, the only deviation from the code that's being requested is the increase in the number of parking spaces. We do have minimum and maximum parking space allowances. Uh, the maximum in this case, I believe, is 69 spaces. They're currently at 65, and I believe they would be going to 90, absent the 10 spaces that are really being intended to serve the preserve. Um, and I believe there is a report in the record that speaks to the justification for going beyond the typical amount of parking. I don't know if my staff or anything related to that report that was thrown out, or perhaps the applicant could, could speak to the justification.
The parking justification? Yeah, we, we certainly can. Um, when it comes to the, the ordinance that Ashley had spoken with before, um, there's, it's not a, this is not a campus facility, but the three schools do interact together. Um, and so overall, the total number of spaces, um, that would be provided is 278, which is less than the overall maximum for the addition of a preschool. So the elementary school is under, uh, the proposed, the high school, which is under construction, is also under the maximum, so this would be the only space that would be a little bit over. Um, and then I just want to stress that it's really not the parking piece that was as important to KIP as the actual circulation piece. It's very important to them that they provide a, a safe access for students, for parents. With the installation of the traffic signal that's coming at the intersection of North Manning and Northern, and the elementary school, a lot of the circulation for to and from into the middle school occurs on Northern Boulevard. That just can't happen with the installation of the traffic signal. They need to separate that traffic out. So we looked at many, many options for changing that circulation, um, and the best option really was to get off-site, get off of North, off of North Manning and move into that space that's in back. Um, so this really was, this is probably not the best plan. Um, if you go into the presentation and, I don't know, slide four maybe, slide three or four, that shows the bus circulation and the vehicle circulation. We really need to get those vehicles off of Northern Boulevard, and this was a really good way to do it, a good opportunity to do it. And I think, as Brad mentioned, that this is a big cooperation between the city, between KIP, and, and benefiting Tivoli with the, being able to keep green space in the Tivoli Park area and put the parking spaces, not in the park area, but in a different parcel that's not there. That parcel itself is about point six, point six acres, point six five acres or so. Um, and minimizing the number of spaces there was very, very important, um, because I think in the plans, we've actually come down over time, Brad. I don't think we actually went up.
We went up and then you came down.
Yeah, we went up and then we went back down. Um, and then banking spaces, but really it's the circulation that matters back there. I think the other thing I would like to clarify is that the, the clearing that's being discussed, I mean, two pieces. One of them that you said, you're, it's the city project right now that's, that's clearing in order to put this, this entrance into the parking space. The other piece to clarify is that, um, the clearing where there's some storage of woody, you know, trees, limbs, whatever, on the site itself, that's not clearing from on the site, that's actually clearing from the middle school parcel itself. So that clearing is not on that site, it's just being stored there. There's nothing that's been cut, cut down on the site itself as part of this project at all. We are happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
From the board.
I have a question. Um, so there's two questions. Can you talk a little bit about, um, what efforts and where you've made to incorporate impervious, um, or semi-pervious materials within your presentation? To be clear, and the percentage?
Sure, Ashley's gonna have those specifics.
Sure, so, uh, we did-
Is there a drawing?
Uh, it was included in the recent PDF, so, uh, if you'd like to look at this, you can, but we did explore options of pervious pavement. However, due to slope stability, we cannot infiltrate in that area, and that's why-
Terms of what?
The slope stability, so that's why we also changed the stormwater management practice from infiltration to filtration. So in order to combat the large amounts of pavement, we added islands with trees and landscaping, as well as street trees up the road, uh, to provide shade.
Okay. So you are incorporating tree islands?
Uh, yes, yes. We do have trees in our islands.
Yeah, the islands that are shown right there are actually treeed islands.
Uh, yes, if you, uh, scroll down just a little further, there's, um, a landscaping plan, uh, right here, yes. So we incorporate different types of, uh, seating also in the stormwater management practice area, so they'll be tall grasses and, uh, grasses that don't need mowing as well.
Sure. And with respect to your stormwater management plan, can you just explain that broadly for all of us?
Uh, sure, so, uh, so how it is changed or just in general?
How it's changed, what the effort you've made to reduce it, other than saying meeting the city codes? Maybe you could give us some bullets to understand what that incorporates.
Uh, sure. Sure, so originally, we incorporated a four bay and a infiltration basin.
What does that mean?
So the four bay would, the water would, is running off the parking lot at the moment. We also do include some storm structures where we can't achieve, uh, runoff via land flow.
Okay.
So we are flowing into a four bay where the water will essentially sit until it goes into the infiltration or filtration basin.
It circulates down?
Correct. Uh, well, the four bay is lined, so it won't infiltrate, but the sediment and any, uh, flip salts or silt will kind of settle out of the water. It'll travel into, uh, through that weir at the center. When there is a major storm event, it will go into the second basin, which will then filter through the filter media and exit out of a culvert, so, uh, it's essentially filtering almost twice. Or if there is a major storm event, like 100-year or 500-year storm event, we provide a weir area where it can overflow.
Okay.
So.
And that's been, you've been working with the water department?
Uh, yes, correct.
And the City of Albany to incorporate their rigorous standards?
Correct.
To modify the plan that you provided.
Uh, correct, yes.
Okay. And the second question I have is snow storage area?
Uh, sure, so, uh-
How do you get rid of snow? Where does it go?
Well, uh, we are not curving any of this parking lot south or right of, or left of the page, excuse me. So snow storage can be where we are proposing banked parking or in that corner area to the bottom left.
And will you get the right radiuses turned for the buses?
Uh, yes, so, uh, all minimum radiuses are met, uh, for commercial vehicles as well, so we used a minimum of 33 for the entrance up top, but all buses, we've done the turning, turning movements, and they will be able to make those turns.
With snow?
Uh, yes, yes, because the snow will essentially be pushed out of the, the drive aisle.
The radius for the buses is actually much improved with this project because right now it's very square.
Yeah.
When you enter, and if you can see, hopefully, that there's a nice, a nice radius, a nice curve, so buses can enter and exit much more easily with, with this current layout.
And what happens when you do utilize the banked parking? The banked parking is on, I think, is the far left or left, not the bottom, right? Okay.
So, uh, the banked parking is also, uh, it's at the bottom, actually, so we're not showing it.
Where the bank?
Uh, right in front of the basin, I would say, so, uh, right in that area, so where the grass area is. So snow storage can also be achieved, uh, at that curved area to the, at the entrance where the parents would come in. It can be achieved to the rear of the parking on the left side. There's still ample storage for snow.
I'm thinking the diagram, you're not sho, you're not showing the parking, right?
Correct.
That's what it-
Yeah, I apologize.
And I think Ashley also mentioned that the path that's going to go from the, um, Tivoli Preserve area all the way up to the existing sidewalk on Northern, on Northern Boulevard also has several trees, mature plantings on that Northern construction in order to get that trail all the way up.
Correct, trees and street amenities, so venting for pedestrians.
Couple of questions. Um, I don't remember the gentleman's name who was, uh, who mentioned that there are like two different, there's like the, the Northern Trail and the Southern Trail, and that it looked like there was only one-
One loop connection?
Yes, I'm not, probably not articulating very well. I was wondering if you remember that comment, if you could speak to how access, like what trail is being created or maintained to provide access.
Sure, uh, so we are not providing trail access through this project. We are providing the sidewalk to Tivoli Preserve trailhead, which would then provide access to the trails.
And the work the city is doing is providing that full connection to both. Uh, you could probably show it again on, on the plan. Sorry, we have you jumping around everywhere.
I, I don't have that open. Okay, that's, so, the, I think it was the, the South Trail that he was mentioning.
Yeah. I'll just show you what it looks like here. So we're gonna provide the parking at this location, and we provide the sidewalk that comes in to the, to the work that the city's doing, and then the city comes down here and it connects here to both of the trails that were being discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, another question in regards to one of the comments that was made, um, and as somebody who does a lot of planting myself and never has the time or has to make the time to water and care for, what are the plans for you to say planting new trees to make sure that they are being watered and maintained, that they will actually grow to maturity?
Sure, so it is my understanding that our landscape architect has provided, uh, trees and landscaping that require low maintenance. I am not sure of the maintenance agreement between what people provide and what these trees will need, but they are low maintenance. They do not require large amounts of water.
And since these would be on KIP property, it would be their role to maintain and make sure that they're staying healthy?
We had another question.
Standard U S D O requires, you know, if it does die within the first year of life.
Correct.
Can you reply to that?
Yes.
And I guess my final question, and this is, I wonder, so looking, um, I spent a good part of my afternoon reading through lots and lots of public comment, um, and, you know, specifically, you know, concerns about, um, the parking spaces and should we be encouraging more carpooling and public transportation, et cetera? And I, I wonder, because you said, you know, the, the concern was really more about providing safer access, so you're separating out, parents are dropping here, buses are dropping here. Is there any option that would have fewer parking spaces, less of an impact, that would still allow for that separate turnaround area that maybe doesn't require paving as much or maybe isn't as significant?
We looked at several options, um, and one of those being coming in off of North Manning and putting a loop in the, kind of the existing green space on KIP's property in order to avoid kind of adding that more, more pavement, right? It's not our goal to do that either, um, but it didn't work with respect to having enough storage for parents to come in, drop off, and then circle back around and go to the traffic signal. It just, it just didn't work. We really tried. We were hoping that we might be able to go through the private road that's the apartments and come back out around there, use something that's already existing, but that's a private road, and we were not able to gain access to it. Um, so this really ended up being the best alternative. We really tried to get other things in place, we just weren't able to make them work.
A parent who drops off, not a kid, but another student faster than his school.
Yeah, it's hard. It's hard to do. It's that 20 minutes every day.
Right, and so just to kind of clarify my head, the way the parking, you know, works in the whole area around the school, there's, there's 60-some spaces that are already there that are behind the school, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then the new parking, the first set of bays will be for the preserve.
Correct, 10 spaces, yes. And they're gonna be separated by kind of a, um, a natural barrier kind of thing, like a post and beam kind of thing, maybe? But something that looks nice, keeps everything separate, so we know who's our who's.
Oh, okay, so it's clear to everyone?
It's clear, yes.
Okay. And then behind that, there'll be a number of other spaces which will be used by teachers or staff?
So teachers and staff as needed. I would, um, their lot is fairly full right now, the middle school lot, so, um, they, they may have some expansion spaces back there, but it's probably more often gonna be used if there's an event at this school and they need more spacing, spaces for, um, for parents to park.
Right.
For an actual event.
And, and then the spaces in the far left, those are the banked ones or are those-
Those are actual spaces. The banked ones are gonna be, um, closest to the Tivoli Preserve, so that those, that space, um, to, uh, Plan South is where those banked spaces would be.
It's not drawn in, it's the road, it's the parking lot line, right?
Okay. Okay.
So it's not drawn in?
They're not, yeah, they're not drawn in.
Okay.
Okay.
Welcome.
I, I do want to note, though, that the addition of those 10 spaces have been taken into account with all stormwater calculations, so if they are installed in the future, it won't impact anything adversely.
And I'm sure this has been discussed before, and it's just slipping my mind, are any of the parking spots, EV?
I believe, I believe that they were gonna try and get one in, I can't remember.
We're gonna run power to the site, obviously, for cameras and parking lot lighting. I believe that they've got EV chargers that currently exist on the existing parking lot. Uh, I don't know, I can check with the president and see if there's a demand for more, because we will be running power in cooperation with the city to the entrance to the preserve and the parking lot.
Might be a good time.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, at least run the conduit and have it all there.
Strongly encourage that. I, I think, particularly given that we're weighing environmental impacts and need to address population concerns, um, I would strongly encourage that.
Thank you.
That's true.
What is, how will that area down there around the, the two ponds be- What is, how will that area down there around the, the two pods be landscaped?
Sure, so let me turn to that. We are using seed mixtures, uh, that are approved by the DEC, um, and let me see if I have the exact seed mixture here for, for the specific stormwater practice. Since the, I do not have the specific seed mixture, but it is, oh, I'm sorry, it is an approved seed mixture for this type of practice.
Sort of the kind of low lying grasses and whatever.
And it won't need to be mowed within the basins itself, so yes.
Okay.
But it still will need ma- maintenance.
Right. It'll appear natural, obviously.
Correct.
Can I ask a question, actually, of the planning department? Just to clarify, because again, just listening to all of the comments, someone had commented somewhere in there that the land still belongs to Department of Environmental Conservation or something, the effect of like, this land should not be used in this purpose because it hasn't already been transferred or something to that effect. Can you just comment, because from my understanding, this agreement has been in effect from twenty twenty-two, but I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding who actually owns the property and the rights to be making these decisions.
As far as I'm aware, it's the state of New York and it's either administered either by OPRHP, which is Parks and Recreation, Store Preservation, or, uh, General Services. Again, there is a legislative act that speaks to transferring this property to KIP, uh, provided that the aims of that armament, which are the, we talked about earlier.
More questions? Final comment from the audience.
You mentioned, uh, low maintenance trees, can you tell me what trees are being planted? Are they native species? And what sort of planting arrangement is there? Are they going into those cement pods that are there? Are they going into the ground? And how are they going to be watered until there's a very sustainable age? Most contractors, when they put in trees, will put them in, they may tend them for a year, usually is not enough.
Uh, sure, so, uh, any trees installed within this parking lot area will be maintained by KIP and all trees that are being installed are on the, I believe, the only approved list, uh, there's an approved list for trees, correct? Correct, yes, um, so I don't believe there'd be any trees that are not considered needed for this area, um, let me. I, I believe so, yes, uh, it would be in the top corner. Uh, sure, so, uh, the four larger trees and then the four islands, uh, would be TA, which is, uh, yes, correct, and the, the larger trees on the two northern islands, uh, are AR and PH. So the, the bottom three are the trees that are used throughout the site.
How big are the planting areas, pods, whatever they're going in?
They will be planted directly into the islands themselves. Uh, there is a, uh, size on the table itself, uh, so, um, for the, for the trees, if, if that's what you're also asking.
Yeah, Judy, this is, the, the plans are available for viewing on the city website, and if you can't find them, we can direct you, and I, I would hope that everyone at the table here would be open to suggestions for tree plantings, if what's on your plan is not agreeable, I think it's sort of at least at this point, so.
Thank you.
Okay, and we, Anna's telling me she did work with our arborist to get feedback on them, so hopefully we're in the right direction here. We do engage our arborist on that project, so.
All right, seeing as we exhausted all comments. Board members, do you have any additional comments for staff and board, the applicant? Seeing none, the recommendation is to approve the development plan review with conditions as well as approval of the parking waivers. This is filed on the final page of your briefing packet, uh, for your perusal, is there a motion to approve the waivers? First waivers for off-street parking under section three five seven dash four oh five two C, the second is a waiver for off-street parking under section two seven five dash four oh five, five, section five C double I.
So, one, one of the, one of the waivers is related to the total exceeding the maximum allowance that we talked about.
Yeah, minus the, minus the bank.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then the other waiver is for the size of the parking spaces, proposing nine by eighteen instead of nine by twenty, so smaller than is what is to.
Right.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second to approve the two waivers for off-street parking, is there any readiness? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Second recommendation. Recommend the approval of the development plan review, number oh two four five, with the two conditions listed below, prior to issuance of a building permit, final approval shall be obtained from the Department of Water and Water Supply, two, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, lot modification for consolidation of, uh, five, nine, six many Boulevard and three, two, one Northern Boulevard shall be completed. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Correct.
It's been moved to second to approve the development plan review, number oh two four five, with the two conditions as read, all in favor, please say aye, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. I wanna thank everybody for the participation tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, he was Ontario. We'd ask that the participants take conversations outside so that we can continue with the rest of the planning board meeting, be respectful of the other applicants and participants that are here tonight. Next on our meeting agenda is one thirty Ontario Street, this is for conditional use permit, demolition review, development plan review, uh, looking at CEPR and those items as well, destruction of a four-story dwelling, multi-unit, uh, containing sixty, seventy-six dwelling units, combination of combined eleven thousand nine hundred square feet, daycare and community center on the first floor, fifty-two off-street parking spaces, proposal moves demolition of the existing one-story building in consolidation of three existing lots and a portion of city rent, I believe this is the second time that we've seen this one, um, yes.
Yes.
So, thank you very much for being here, for your.
You're welcome, I'm Sean McGuire, the executive director for the Albany County Land Bank, we're partners on this project, everybody else is out of town, so you get me, I apologize. Oh, Jamie is online, good, good, so, uh, I mean, the, the physical body, but the, uh, the little body is, is also here, uh, I appreciate Jamie joining us, uh, and taking a little bit of time away from the family, so, uh, Jamie, do you wanna walk through these?
Sure, I, I can, we can start off by, uh, just going in, into this, the PowerPoint presentation, uh, and we can go through the, the conditional use permits and the project overall and everything else.
Uh, we got the descriptions lined up right now.
Okay, I, I see it, so, the, the existing site lies between Bradford, uh, to the north, uh, west to the south, Quail is on your east and Ontario is really your, uh, western edge of this property. There it is, there's the pretty zoning map, we're in the MU, uh, MUFM zone, the existing building there was a one-story building built in the sixties, I believe it was a school, there's a parking lot in the rear, and they have property on the other side of west, which was an auxiliary parking lot. So we're taking this whole abandoned site, is the best word, best word to use, taking it down, putting it in four-story building, and on the first floor, there'll be approximately about twelve thousand square feet of commercial space. The commercial space will be divided into, I'll call it two pods, one along Bradford Street, which will be about five or about six thousand square feet, which is proposed to be a daycare, and the roughly other six thousand square feet will front Ontario Street, which is basically on either end of the proposed building, and we'll kind of go through this. Um, as part of this project, uh, so we have, th- there's, there, the conditional use permit is be one of the permits that we're looking at tonight, and there's the slide, so Ontario Street right now is on your right-hand side, Bradford's on the bottom, but the pink area that you're looking at is really the daycare space, the green is the community hub space in which community groups can utilize, and the architect has designed basically two pods for the community space, um, so it can be utilized by different groups, and certainly the tenants are going to be able to also use the area in purple, that's the proposed plan, that's how the application has gone in, just so the board is aware that we need conditional uses on the daycare, the community hub, and the, uh, the apartment units, even though it's, these are approved uses in the MUFM zone, we are in the underlying neighborhood district in which requires these uses to be a conditional use by the, by the planning board. So that's why you, you've may have seen these before in similar, you know, FM, F, oh, whatever, I can't forget the zoning right now, but in the current zoning, but this is very specific because we're in the neighborhood area, that's why these, all three, uh, conditional uses for this building have to be granted by this board. Uh, next slide, so there's the site plan I kind of talked about before, Ontario on your left, or basically to your west, Bradford on the top, and this will give you an idea of what we're really kind of merging together and how the overall project's gonna look. We are going to basically redo West Street, new curbing, new sidewalk, repave the road, and then basically put in a cul-de-sac or a roundabout, it's really cul-de-sac, it's really not a roundabout, cul-de-sac is a better term, in which, um, fire trucks, garbage trucks, emergency vehicles can just enter in and enter out and go back to the existing light on West and Quail Street. Um, we've originally, we're looking at using the cul-de-sac as a drop-off area and a rear drop-off area for the daycare center, but we have now removed that requirement after some planning comments, there's no drop-offs, the, the rear entrance to the building for the daycare has been relocated, all drop-offs, everything will happen in the parking lot, so, um, completely independent, uh, expansive what we're doing here, um, but you, when you look at the existing site in Google, obviously you see a lot of green there, the whole site currently is paved, so we're adding a lot of green back into the community and, and trying to soften the site up i- overall in general. So that's the, the current site plan. So as I kind of went over, you know, the, the proposed uses for the buildings, here's the general hours of operation, all these proposed conditional uses that the board needs to look at is, are they really in the neighboring areas? And, and all these uses, obviously daycares, um, there's a lot of them around, um, certainly the apartment use, the building next door, uh, the, and just a little farther up on, on Bradford Street, there's, yeah, obviously there's another apartment use, um, community hub space is certainly, uh, I think, a little bit farther and stretch, uh, a little farther away, but all these proposed uses do currently reside in the, uh, zoning, uh, under this zoning zone and within the boundaries of this project or near the boundaries of this project. Uh, next slide. Demolition, this is kind of real easy for the planning board to understand, take down the old building, put up a new one. Um, certainly, the old building, there'll be some benefits that we'll try to extract from the building in the sense of bricks, uh, any metal in the building, certainly that will be recycled, uh, copper and things like that, um, some of the bricks may be used in concrete in the building, may be crushed and then used as aggregate underneath the parking lot, some of the stuff certainly is just gonna go to the landfill. So that's, that's what's really happening for this project, we can go to the next slide, and you can kind of see the existing one-story twenty-three thousand square foot, and you can kind of see from the survey area what we're looking at here is the big parking lot, the rear, everything is paved on this site and it's really just a, a sea of asphalt, so, uh, next slide please. And these are just ex- uh, exterior pictures of the buildings with it all boarded up, and, uh, some people have been breaking into the building recently, I've been told, and we need to basically, uh, secure the building a, a little bit better to prevent those, to those break-ins. Uh, next slide please. Uh, site plan review or the major, uh, site plan application, certainly this is the existing condition that we, we just went over, um, which we're gonna take everything out, redo the sidewalks on Bradford, on Ontario, on West, and all the pavement goes away and we add a lot more green space, if you go to the next slide. Um, part of the requirement, because we have so many units in the project, is we need to have some outdoor recreational space, and this slide obviously shows, you know, the, the code requirement, what's required, which was seventy-seven hundred square feet, which is proposed outside is almost ten thousand, plus we have an additional twenty-two hundred square feet indoors, which is allowable by code to actually have indoor and outdoor the, the recreational requirement. So you can see that we're certainly above what the code requirement is. Uh, next slide, we'll go to the landscaping plan, obviously when this thing is all said and done, you can kind of see all the tree symbols, you can see the landscaping shrubs, bushes, hedges, you know, the cul-de-sac, you know, tree, tree scaping, the fencing, the large hedgerow that we're placing along the southern and western boundary, we're putting that hed- hedgerow in near the southern part of the parking lot, it's really to screen those existing homes from our, from our project site, so they don't see any headlights or have any impacts, so that hedgerow will go up to about fifteen feet with the hedgerow, there's a fence also behind it too, so for security purposes, for visual purposes, we have provided a lot of screening to the residential uses that are really to the south and to the west of us. Really, everything on the north side of our project is more, I'll call it, um, that's where machine shops are, that's where they fix your cars, things like that, much more, um, I'll call it heavier commercial use, it would be the best terminology for that, and certainly to the right of our, our site at the, next to the right, the cul-de-sac is more, uh, body shops, mechanical shops, and, and certainly you have the apartment complex right to the right. Uh, we'll go on to the next slide, elevations, this is what the architect came up with, certainly on the picture on the left-hand side, you're looking at the main entry point of Bradford and, uh, Ontario, where we're kind of set in the corner of the building back a little bit to make a, a more inviting corner for people to utilize, for the public to utilize, and then you can kind of see the commercial space is kind of, where you see that white car, well, there's like three white cars there, but, uh, next to the three-ten to the right of it, that white car, you can see where that's the commercial space that's bumped out for the community hub and area, and obviously the apartment units are above that, so, let's, that's where we are with that. If you go on to the next slide please, here's the elevations, uh, certainly, planning has gone through the code requirements, um, and looked at this building, and provided comments with the architect, the architect then revised the drawings and provided those back, I believe there's still a couple little minor tweaks that the architect has to do, but in general, the project is in conformance with city codes, with the city UDO code on architectural review. And if we go to the next slide, you guys kind of saw this before, under the conditional use. And if we go to the next slide, you guys kind of saw this before under the conditional use. Where we have, uh, multifamily on the first floor. Community case, community hub space and and where tenants can utilize indoor space to do indoor activities in the green and purple. And really the pink is the dedicated daycare use. If we go to the next slide, your second, third and fourth floors are obviously called cookie cutters on top of each other. They're all multifamily units to make up the 76 units that are out there. Additional information. Uh, this is kind of brought to us. Uh, Lisa, I wanted to let you know typically the construction time for this project is about 18 months. Time we, time the project is awarded by HCR. And then funding happens and shovels actually in the ground. It takes about 18 months to build the project. Uh, we had a previous meeting of with community members on June 12th, uh, 2024 about the project, estimated 30 people there in tenants. Some of those people were in support of the project. Uh, some of the people who were, uh, wanted some additional outdoor amenities that they, they felt that uh, based on the 526 Central Ave project that I did, uh, they felt that those would be better amenities that to incorporate in to this project, which I did. And then some people obviously were just certainly opposed. As mentioned, this is a HCR, uh, funding project. And with, uh, HCR, the, the major thing is timing. And typically the submissions happen only once a year. When does that submission occur? It's in really end of August, beginning of September. Once, and it's only once a year. And this is the problem with, uh, an HCR submission in our, in our overall timelines. So the application goes in, in September, we'll just say September 1st. The applicant doesn't hear back about whether he has HCR approval until the spring, the following year. So we'll say April uh, of next year would be the earliest he would he- hear approvals. Then it takes about six months of, I'll say lawyer work, um, to actually get the everything done and in place. So this project wouldn't even occur at the earliest until fall of 2026. With that being said, if we miss this window of September, really September 1st, the next time this project can go back in is September of 2026, which is almost a year away, which then just causes delays. So um, we're certainly going to be asking the planning board tonight for the demolition permits, the conditional use permit. Conditional site plan approval along once all engineering, as long as all engineering comments are satisfied. And any other town or any city departments comments are satisfied. But the comments I've received have been, uh, uh, in the engineering world, I'll call them minor. They're not very extensive. And then, uh, obviously, as I kind of talked about before, my goal would be then obviously take that conditional, hopefully have final done before, you know, within the next couple of months. But a just, uh, a conditional site plan approval by this board would be helpful due to the fact of HCR has a simple, uh, a point system and points are awarded by a project having site plan approval, um, and, and a seeker determination. Uh, that those points are, you know, way against you if you don't have it. And certainly if it's, they're in, if they're present with an application, it, the project scores higher. And it has a higher probability of being funded by HCR. At this point, I will certainly hope, uh, to answer any of the board's questions they may have.
Go back to the site plan, like the entries or the, where it had all the entry for the daycare and, and yes, so the Bradford Street where the daycare is. What does that look like on the street? Is there a light nearby with a crosswalk? Or are there going to be families just crossing the street on Bradford randomly? Can I piggyback onto that question?
Yeah. Um, and I'm just curious, um, in the public comment, there was the, I forgot the name of the company, maybe Watkins? Something other that had expressed some concern about the daycare in Bradford Street because they use Bradford Street for large, uh, trucks and things. So also just curious, like if you've had conversations with them, sort of what the nature of those conversations have been?
I think Jamie, the, the entrance to the, the daycare is off the parking lot. So you won't see it on the Bradford side. So any traffic associated with the daycare will be coming up of West Street at that cul-de-sac of that parking lot.
Th- that is correct. So, um, and we've, on the signage plan, we did talk to the, cause I, I know from, from the prior comments, there, the to the north of our project site on Bradford Street, most, some of those buildings there, you'd service fire trucks, police, the ci- city, um, equipment, and they have large turning radiuses. So the front of Bradford Street, we have put in the no parking signs along that frontage. So no one's allowed to park a- along there, just as it currently is. It says no parking. So, uh, most of the entries for the daycare will come off of really O- Ontario or West. And even though we say it's a rear entry to the the building, certainly it's a, it's a formal entry to, to the building. Certainly the building will have a formal entrance that is also on Bradford, but certainly you could only utilize the sidewalk along Bradford to get into the, into the building from Brad, from the Bradford Street. But if anybody's dropping off anybody, you're going to pull into the parking lot, park your car, walk, uh, your child into the building.
Those, uh, Jamie, those sidewalks up of Bradford on the daycare side, are those mostly just for emergency exiting purposes?
Yes, tha- tha- that's, I mean, certainly we're trying to make it look like a, a formal door to have a, a visual, architects making a visual presence that's there, but they're more a- as emergency exits. Everybody's going to come into the parking lot, park their car, walk up, which kind of looks like a I don't know what it looks like. It kind of, it had a bunch of, it's obviously it's exactly in the center and you kind of see the sidewalk that doesn't el- uh, up to the building face. And you see a dashed line, the da- that dashed line through the brown building on both the, the top and the, and to your left, really denotes the commercial spaces within the buildings. So you can kind of see the one sidewalk farthest to the right um, from the parking lot, leading up to the center of the building is the main, uh, entry into the building. But even though it's in the rear.
It's great to have that entry for the cars, but there are situations where people walk, right?
To
To the, to the daycare. What would be their trajectory then?
You know, you would, if you're coming, let's say you're taking the bus or something, um, along Central Avenue. I would come down Ontario Street.
Yeah.
To the bottom of the building here and then come across that sidewalk and take the L up. Same thing on West Street. I mean, you're still going to have to make your way to that formal entrance.
Yeah.
So anyway, you should really be coming to West Street and coming in either across the cul-de-sac or from Ontario.
So if, but that's a good point. Like, so if there is a bus stop, I just want to make sure there's a crosswalk associated. Cause my kids went to daycare and there was a crosswalk and nobody would stop.
Yeah.
Yeah. So like you gotta make sure that everybody has that ability to walk, right?
Are you able to walk through the building to get to the daycare?
No, Jamie, right? That's
No. No, you can't walk through the building to get to the daycare. That's correct. The daycare is actually at, you know, it's actually a different elevation and it's actually, you know, physically there's a firewall separating that space on the first floor.
Are you talking about a crosswalk at Ontario and Bradford? Is that what you're thinking? Yeah, I don't really see much there.
I don't think there's anything on the ground now.
It's not even on the ground there, but in situations where you do walk, you at least having something because people will not stop even with a crosswalk. So in the office, someone's, because you are, that, that is a densely packed neighborhood with houses, right?
Yeah, but I'll say the, yeah, that having, having been, become intimately familiar with the other side of the street because we had property over there. We were having squatter issues. I spent a lot of time over here. Low traffic with Bradford Street, probably I think the most is associated with, with Watkins might be bringing around back into the garage.
Which is the best traffic, right? Watkins is a truck, it's a truck, it's a service of fire trucks.
Yeah.
I don't, yeah, I don't think I've seen, I hear what you're saying, but I don't think, having been over there, I've seen really anybody moving very, very fast. Probably the fastest traffic is actually coming from Ontario.
Right.
Central to, to Washington.
So, okay, just.
Anna just reminded me too that, um, I believe engineering is slated to aid in making improvements on Bradford Street. Just maybe in advance of this project. So I think we can say that either focuses you with this project or hopefully engineering already has that slated into their project scope. Maybe at least scrape a crosswalk.
Not a big deal, right?
Location. I think we'll keep an eye on that. Make sure it's in before the project.
Yeah, because Jamie, you had a sidewalk on West Street so that they weren't doing that, correct? So I think they were doing some improvements to Bradford.
That, that is correct. According to the, the emails from the engineering department and, and certainly the, the Bradford Street improvement for really, really pavement, some curb and some sidewalk. Um, so because it was already in the works, even though I had drawn up in my plans, um, some of the work will be done underneath the, I'll call it the city engineering plans, and they wanted me to redo West Street. If a crosswalk is required, you know, scraping wise or whatever, I have no problem adding one in. If, if, if someone misses it, it's, it's, I'll be honest with you. It's it's $500 to, you know, to stripe a crosswalk across Ontario or Bradford Street to get people from Central Ave. Really that's where the bus stop is down to this location. So.
I think it's one of the advantages of this location is its proximity to Central Avenue and, and the transit that exists there. So.
General question, you mentioned at the June meeting, you know, there were some people in support, some people who requested different amenities, and there were some folks who were just opposed generally. What was the, it was the nature of opposition, just not wanting high-rise building? Like what was the nature of the opposition to the, um, project?
Uh, the, some of the opposition, I'll, I'll put it in two categories. One was, um, them feeling safe within the building. And that had to do with some, uh, break-ins into the building as individuals, um, were able to physically overpower the locking mechanisms within the building itself. So that, some of that frustration, feeling safe and things like that, um, were presented. And that's why they kind of took it out on the developer on, 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 even though it's the same developer, took it out on him, uh, uh, on this project site. The other, uh, certainly classic portion of, about this project site in, in specific was they were generally worried about, um, what were the uses in the, in the, i- i- in the commercial areas? You know, my backyard right now is currently a, a vacant parking lot. And at that point I didn't have full design plans, you know? Uh, no one parks there realistically. You know, what are you going to do to screen it? And you know, what are you worrying about? You know, some lighting issues, things like that. That, that, there was, there were really two groups of, of comments from the public that were generally, I would call imposed or, or in opposition to this project in general. But some of those were, we haven't even gotten to, you know, I was at step two of engineering and I needed to get to step 1,000, which, uh, you know, obviously I took those concerns in, into play. And that's why I mentioned the screening and fencing along the south and western property lines for those single-family homes to really screen those, those tenants or those individual homeowners from the project site. So.
Steph comes.
Um, the first stage mostly varied what Jamie had mentioned. Uh, so I don't think I need to go through that. Um, just going through what's under consideration for tonight. Um, just some notes for the timeline. Um, the project was referred for comment most recently at the end of April. Um, DGS and Board Division have no additional comments. Um, engineering provided comments like a few hours ago, which I thought Jamie, um, he took a quick look at them. I think it was like, it's just seven comments. It seemed pretty, um, easy to address. Um, nothing major, no big red flags. So, um, we do include that as a first revision on our recommended approval. Um, and water department is still reviewing, reviewing the project, but, uh, here it is. She's doing extension from the Albion County Water Purification District for a letter, um, at the end of June. So that should be moving forward as far as some amount of review. Um, the project will refer to Albion County Planning Board in February. Um, with the recommendation to, um, modify it to include offshore water regulations, which the project does meet. Um, and that the project should ensure that there are enough parking spaces, those used to avoid traffic congestion. Um, the project does meet the required parking. It actually exceeds the required parking significantly. Um, um, for seeker, there was a phase one submitted along with the part one. Um, the environmental play assessment was submitted by the applicant, um, with the project materials, which they did kind of of their own accord, I think based on previous uses. Um, there was some previous vehicle repair on the site. The phase one A and B were completed. Um, applicant is seeking funding from the ground field, um, cleanup development remediation. Um, so that's just included in the supplemental, the part two and three, three of your consideration with seeker. Um, the project was classified as an undiscussed action and we did appropriate review with New York State HCR due to the public funding request. Um, but given the considerations, um, it doesn't seem like there would be any significant impact. Um, the part two and three, like I mentioned, had been completed along with the supplemental, um, when you recommend a negative declaration. At the next page, um, obviously the three CP applications have been provided, um, and there were a number of revisions since they were last here in February, obviously. Um, there are, but four plans have been revised to include long participability on site as required for code. Um, it meets the new building standards, um, for off-street parking. Um, we keep in additional awnings or balconies. You know, even if it's for those kind of more, so emergency exit on Bradford. Um, there are flat foot sidewalks along all the frontages, including along the cul-de-sac and extending onto West Streets. Um, it meets the required number of street communities, which is 11, um, significant due to the, the frontage. Um, there will be a lot modification needed just given there are three individual parcels and then give that they will be, um, seeking to have a portion of the West Street right away abandoned, um, that that would be incorporated into the overall parcel, um, as a future condition, um, prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Um, the design of the cul-de-sac was discussed that linked with, um, city departments. Um, but generally state of the doubt, the same design, um, with a little bit of a wire turning radius preferred. Um, by some of the, I would say, emergency departments, um, and Department of Traffic Engineering. Um, and those turning movement sheets have been provided to justify a slightly wider width than our maximum dwelling of 28. So it has a 24-foot width. Um, as I mentioned, the off-street parking has been met. The street trees have also been met for a total of 16 street trees scattered throughout the site. We saw the landscape earlier. Um, as Jamie mentioned, there's a lot of landscape around the edges of the parking, which is also required. The storage was identified along the fronting as well as dumpster and storage. Um, inappropriate enclosure, which is separated. Extra lighting plan was provided along the photometrics showing that it wouldn't, you know, it um, go outside of the site itself. Um, we expect that there probably would be some exterior signage and then that would require, you know, a separate permit further on down the line for future tenants. Otherwise, we solve the planning code. There's, I think, two or, yeah, two sheets of recommended actions given the number of requests. The, the first one would be related to seeker. Then demolition, then CP, and the following is of interview. Any questions on my action on this all?
All right. Our recommended actions. Do we have a motion for negative declaration for a secret? All right, our recommended actions, do we have a motion for negative declaration for Seaker?
So moved. Go ahead, you.
Moved by Rachel, second by Martin. Any um readiness, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Second recommendation is approval of the demolition review, DR number zero one five five, is their motion. Their second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of the demolition review. Is there any readiness, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Third and final, oh, no, third, not final. Approval of the conditional use permits, number zero zero eight seven, zero zero eight eight, and zero zero nine zero. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Their second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the approval of the aforementioned conditional use permits. Hearing none, readiness, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Approval of the development plan review, number zero two four zero. With the three conditions listed on the screen. Prior to issuance of the building permit, final approval shall be obtained from the Department of Engineering. Prior to the issuing of the building permit, final approval shall be obtained by the Department of Water and Water Supply. And prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, lot modification for consolidation of one thirty Ontario. One fifty-four West Street and one thirty-four West Street, and a portion of the seat on right-of-way currently known as West Street shall be. Is there a motion for the approval with those three conditions as ready?
So moved.
Hearing none, readiness, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, I want to thank the the city staff as well, because we wanted to get this through at the right time, and thank you so much. All right, we'll see us.
Thank you for having me.
Take care.
All right, last man standing, forty-three second street.
Hello.
Good to see you, Christmas, congratulations, are you working for you?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations. Boy or girl?
My third boy.
Third boy.
Oh, you're gonna be so busy, even busy.
ER. And he's keeping us.
I'll send you all next month, I'll see you on Thursday.
Thursday.
HRC, yeah. That's what boys do, team, make forget.
Cats too.
We had a cat too.
Absolutely, all right, the floor is yours for forty-three second half.
Um, so forty-three second half is project what you're, what I'm working on and trying us to get it. Approved device for conditional use, I don't know if we are yet to that stage, but um I'm hoping that we are close at least. It is, as a project planned, there are thirty-two units, there are some, well, these studio apartments. We will have uh also one bedrooms and two bedrooms. There will be a different kind of uh apartments from inside. You'll have duplexes on the second and the third floor, there will be a have a different. Lookout, so I'm, you have, I want also to apologize, maybe I'm also going out of. Out of the line, because I, this is my, literally my first time that I'm doing it, so maybe doing something wrong. So if you talk about the project location, location is on this um forty-three second avenue, it's between Stanton and. Uh, Tony Street. Um, it is the full block, basically on the second street, I have two main entrances in the front. And we have two uh second aggress or entrances um on that back of the building. I'm not seeing really good, I don't.
This is the site plan. Just calling out.
So.
Exterior spaces.
So this is the requested outdoor, outdoor space. But but are also of condition to have like a ten person on the, on the general, general square footage. We also do have an inside space uh for recreation or for tenants' use. And also for the, on also the outset. There are the two entrances, what you can see. This is the sidewalk, I, I'm, what we need to replace, right?
Uh, more the traffic and protection tra- uh maintenance and traffic protection plan while the construction is going on.
So um most of that part, most of the part is actually now um done. Whatever needed to get moved inside the building, all the materials, everything, all what is heavy and duty causing any traffic to be to be blocked. And I do not think that we will be causing any, any fu- future interruption on material. When the, uh, when you get to the point, when we have the construction done, then um. We will be just having probably still to talk again about a small access from this side to leave. Uh, inside the property to make it possible that the uh. Um, tenants can move freely in, basically to the, that like, like. Uh, moving trucks and whatever, and not to lock the street, that's the only thing what is at this stage. So, this north elevation on the the face on second street. Yeah, and got approval from the HRC for the windows and for the doors. Um, the doors itself, that will be restorated, it's a, it's a, um, they call it HR from New Jersey. Hardware restoration, and they will be restoring the doors as good as possible. The two main, on the left, on the right side, both doors, and we will be, I like actually the doors, and I really want to keep them to use them. Because they look really nice. This is from uh Stanton Street. We will have, um, I got their sites, the approval from the windows, we have also uh um. Fire escapes over there, that's been got also, as per my understanding, approved to get removed. And the windows, what you see at this, at this moment, are actually uh. Um, on existing, existing are like doors, but we will be having to replace them with. Similar looking uh windows, because we don't, do not have a fire escape anymore over there, and we cannot leave people to have access on nothing. As east elevation, this will be, is, yeah, not moving or replacing anything besides the windows. All the same cutouts, we are not making any new openings or closings. So this is from the back, from the back, the only thing what will be here uh. Um, changed is, I don't know why it's not on here, if you see the small door on the south, on uh on the left side. That one here, this would be not the door anymore, because this is, at this moment, I'm using this as an entrance for my construction. But this will be uh closed up and uh it can be visible looking as door, but I will not use as any access. The second door, it, it's a double doors on the, in the middle, in the center of the picture, and on the right, these are the main entrances for apartments. Basically, on the left side or the right side. Um, this will be, if you uh see the door over there, it is also existing door. This will be the super apartment or the maintenance apartment. This will have, this on the apartment will have a separate entrance and have an access also to the backyard straight. Where the um garbage and everything else will be also having the storage space. These are the apartments, this is the first floor plan, and the first floor, we will, we will have on the. If we start on the right side, you'll have two, two for um. Uh, if you start from the left side, my bad, I'm sorry, you will have four apartments, four apartments, this are studio apartments. Um, that are on average like three hundred and seventy uh square feet. And three hundred and seventy to three hundred and ninety depends. Um, on the right side, from the, from the building, we will have one bedrooms, the larger. This larger living rooms, the center part that we are seeing here, and the main entrance will be on the right side. Basically, on on second street, will be the, yeah, in front of the building, will be the left, left entrance. Uh, in the main, in the, now, in, from Stanton Street, this part is a basement. Here, but if you are looking from the second street, this part is like half, half of the uh slope. Exactly, so, uh, the reason why we are keeping now the, on the right side, but you, you can see they have electric room, we have storage room. Water room and laundry, this part here is because we have limited, small windows. And we are keeping this without any other use besides community use, and here at the laundry, there is a change, I don't know why we. I'm sorry, maybe I, we didn't submitted that, but there is a small change, the laundry moved actually to this. I'm sorry, I'm not seeing really good, can you just zoom in a little bit?
This is the most I can zoom in.
So the laundry is mov- is moving, okay, can you, okay, the laundry is moving to the Stevens, to the right. And this part will be like a community, this community room, that some, like a billiard pool table or something.
So the storage is going away?
Uh, no, the storage is getting just smaller.
Okay.
So we are trying to accommodate as much as amenities inside the the building as possible. So, yeah. This is the second floor, and the second floor, we have, all of them are mezzanine, or have a loft. I know everybody else calls them different, I've been trying to catch the right, right term. Um, on the left side, we have, all of them are one bedrooms, they are average around by s-. Close to seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and eighty square feet. What they uh average, um, they have like all um. Uh, head size on the first floor is seven feet six, on the, on the top of the mezzanine is seven feet nine. In the bedroom, so the entire ceiling height is, is, yeah, close to sixteen feet, and some places are sixteen two, because it's older building. And uh, yeah, it's, it's a beautiful, beautiful place. So, uh, on, everything is saying on the left and on the, on the middle part. The only difference is on the right part of the building, what is in, in front of second and the Stanton Street. These apartments are two, uh, two, two bedrooms. And have a large storage space, or what can be also used as a bedroom on top of this two bedroom, but what are visible here. What you can see at this moment, so you can call it a three-bedroom, or you can call it as a two-bedroom with a large. Livable pace, liveable space on the mezzanine on top. The third floor is basically the same thing, the only thing what is different is on the right side. By by the staircase, this, the staircase on the front, on second street, basically, this doesn't actually exist. Was a mistake from the, from me, actually, not even because I insisted it there, and now they have it. This is actually a room, what is, got added to the middle apartment, that we see. So we have extra one bedroom, extra two-bedroom apartment, the party. That's what I have to say for this part here.
There's no elevator in this building?
This is no elevator, because it's only two or three floors.
The even holder? Are you asking if they need an elevator?
Yeah.
You can, it's not my code, but we can confirm and let you know, I I have to, I'm thinking, no.
You think that, just, I was gonna double check too, because, so I think what it looks like is there's no ADA unit, right?
It is not possible to have ADA unit here, because the circuits are existing, and I am not able, because of HRC, to make any changes. And I'm kind of limited outside in the.
It's a tough building, and I remember parties looked at it.
Yeah.
And getting it to work for, yeah, for the tax credits and certain purposes, because configuration is very different.
Yeah, and the slope.
And the slope makes everything, the entire building is built in three sections, in three different times. First part of the building, what you have is only the part on second street, from the, from second and Tony's. But without the L, basically, just a straight part, they've gotten an addition, probably thirty, forty years later from the first time built. What is this side here, the Tony's, and then, if I, my English is not the best, I'm just trying to say as. As is possible, so um, the first part of the, the, this school is that part here, what you see between the first. Between the left corner and the second door, this is the first part what it built, and the addition got up thirty to forty years later on. They added the, the second door and the next four apartments or classrooms. And the last part, but that added is that part here, where it was actually a gym, or they tried to complete it as a gym. And the entire building is in three, three kind of levels. But the difference between this here, the left, the Tony, uh, the Stanton Street and the other side. And the, the Tony Street is like eleven feet. And that's, that makes it complicated, that you cannot have an ADA in each, any.
Level, yeah.
Each level, this doesn't, just doesn't work, and I don't have the space to, to be, to, to work around it and to give, to give it that. Or elevators are required only four floors and above.
Correct.
So, and it doesn't matter where, it's the New York State law, if we will be in some, certain cases, yes, even in three. But this building isn't existing.
You can see the structure.
And you cannot modify it.
Cool project.
Yeah, Nick could confirm or deny, but I've heard some variation, the story that the city went to more or less tear it down, and they found him in there working on it. Keeping it up, so.
Actually, I had, when I bought the building, when I bought the building, the building was in terrible shape. I had a lot of pictures sent out to the agency.
Yeah.
So, and the building was neural, all the T-jose connections were literally gone. Somebody demolished the previous owner, the building was probably a year away to, not to get demolished from the city, but. Just falling down on themselves.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, we replaced all, we did probably around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on only re- stabilizing the building. With the structure, with the new roof, and getting it just make, hold together first and then to make it stable. So building is now totally safe, and it's probably even better than it was before. So, um, yeah, the building, Mr. Rickeljoy, the director. The day that we start cleaning up the site, um, I have uh some gentleman. I don't remember the name from the inspector, coming in and saying, what are you guys doing here? I'm cleaning up, cleaning, I do not need a permit, no, you cannot clean up, we are demolition group, doing the demo here. Then I just bought the building.
You bought the building.
I just bought the building, literally a week before, a month before, as soon as I got the key, I started working. I had like twenty guys over there just trying to get garbage, we removed hundred and forty, hundred and fifty, thirty yard dumpsters. Garbage from that place, and I come here, Mr. Rickeljoy and Mr. David. Who's here, both of them, David knowed me, actually, because I'm doing also the J Street.
Yeah.
Over there at the project, and says, Nick, what you doing there, who is the owner, say? It's me, the owner, and I'm trying to clean it up, and you guys are telling me that you want to tear it down, let me get a permit. Nick, I, you don't think that it is possible that you get a permit, because the building is unsafe, so I make it safe, give me a permit. I ended up getting drawings and getting everything in rush, and got the drawings and got. And ended up getting drawings and getting everything in rush and got the drawings and got the permit and now we are here where we are. And I am happy with it, how come all the building looks?
I love these buildings, oh my gosh.
You should come and visit the building actually.
I would like.
You are whenever welcome to, invited all of you.
Yeah.
Because we did a lot of extensive work with them.
Now that it's safe, yeah.
It is definitely safe. So additional information, do I need to say?
I just want to confirm, it says thirty-four, we're still working on thirty-two, right?
Thirty-two, I, I remove, I'm thirty-two.
Steph, take us home.
So some of the information Nick's already addressed, the property has three frontages, Stephen Street, Second Street, Tunis Street. We understand the history of the project was first building eighteen twenty-five, was the school district, but has remained vacant for a long time. The applicant purchased the property in twenty-four, it's completed the stabilization work. The project is classified as an unlisted action under seeker. A certificate of appropriateness application has been acquired because of its location within the HRC district. They are working with our staff and are, have already been heard at the HRC once and will be heard again on Thursday. A few things here that are outstanding from planning perspective from the project and site plans. The floor plans, they do not indicate any recreation area, but you did say that you have, so those updated floor plans.
They will be coming in.
The plans were updated to include laundry facilities that weren't there shown last time. The floor plan indicates that additional work would need to be completed along Stephen Street frontage that would be located within the city's right of way. Just understand that any encouragement would require an agreement with the city, which must be obtained by appropriation council. The site plan, which is dated May second, indicates that sidewalk, sidewalk and curb improvements will be completed along Tunis Street. The site plan should be updated to include any side, sidewalk and curb improvements along Second Avenue and Stephen Street as well.
There is no need on that part, it's only literally Talent Street because it's big tree, you remember, you were on the job site. And the tree just moved, literally lifted to the sidewalk. And I want to fix that part, so, yeah.
But no sidewalk improvements or curb improvements are being proposed at the other two frontages?
Just not even though.
The existing, the, the structure is classified as illegal non-conforming structure, therefore the existing setbacks is, are acceptable and the impervious lot coverage is acceptable, which does exceed what is allowed otherwise. The maximum number of dwelling units in the M U A zoning district is one percent fifty square feet, the proposed thirty-two dwelling units complies. The applicant should, should provide a document outlining, outlining the floor, number of units for each floor type of unit and square footage, just because within the site plan, the unit numbers aren't quite called out.
Yeah, I'm not, I, actually we have also the document, I can just tell Jasmine to send it to you.
The engineering zoning compliance form is submitted, however, the, the second part that outlines where those units are and what that square footage would be, that needs to be included. There is a couple waivers that have been submitted for the street amenities, one of them is the street amenities. It's a partial waiver which has been requested for relief, allowing for two amenities along Second Avenue and one along Stephen Street, where otherwise three would be required along Second Avenue and two would be required along Stephen Street. One is also required along Tunis Street, that they have addressed. The gross floor area of the existing principal structure is increased by more than twenty-five percent, therefore the compliance with this provision is required. They have submitted the waiver. The existing sidewalk conditions, we talked about this. I, I believe engineering might have some comments that they've submitted in remarks to this, so.
We saw, I didn't see anything for second or seventh suite, we saw all the comments what came, the same one what we saw, what is necessary. I really want to make that part of the, the, the building definitely beautiful and it is only on, on Tony's Street.
There is a second waiver for street tree requirement. You're seeking a waiver for the required trees along Stephen Street frontage, which would be two street trees that would be required from Stephen Street frontage. There is also one additional tree requirement for Second Avenue frontage that should be included in the waiver, that's not being provided. The landscape buffer has been provided along the lot line adjusts adjacent to thirty-five Tunis Street and thirty-eight Stephen Street. The trash enclosure and details have been updated within the site plan for the provision screening. The mechanical equipment is not roof mounted?
It is not roof mounted and it's, will be, or will be wall mounted on the, on the courtyard or we call this part in the backyard. Because it is not possible to install any damage.
Sure.
In this existing structure what the building has, because it will be, as per the engineer, causing more damage than good and more not saving. And if I do extend it or put it on the backyard, then I'm losing all the recreation space because you need to have certain space for each unit. And this will be just complicating and losing really the, it, it will be in different place. So it will be wall mounted on the courtyard and what is not visible from the street.
Sure, if you could just include that in the site plan details.
It was till now not clear what we exactly doing, so, because they were measuring.
And the plans were updated identifying the proposed exterior lighting and photo metrics. And the updated site plan, the site plan should be updated to include any proposed signage that would be.
Signage stays the same what we have. I don't want to change it, I love that school number seventeen, just gets, keeps the same character, I don't want to change nothing.
Alright, we're gonna combine these three recommendations into one, so motion to table. Certainly appreciate you coming out and all the deciding work that you've done.
Could I, could I just ask?
Sure.
Being that we've seen this twice, this would be, we would work all this out and this would be on a consent agenda next time? Is that something we should drive or if it's?
That would be great, yeah.
Absolutely fantastic.
Because we don't want to miss that window.
Just making sure no one has any major Herculean asks or concerns.
Correct, no.
Okay. Yep, just working through the details. Alright, so is there a motion to table for the waiver for street amenities, street trees, and the development plan review until all departmental comments have been satisfied?
So moved.
Their second.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to table to a subsequent meeting for the table of the waiver for street amenities, the waiver for street trees, and development plan review until all departmental comments have been satisfied. Hearing no objection, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No, no. No further, it passed unanimously and we look forward to our revisiting this with you. And I don't see it being a problem. Is there any additional business to him, Mr. Like?
It's not.
Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Absolutely. Without objection, we will adjourn this meeting at eight thirty-nine PM.